All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of the Orange County School Board. And we are so thrilled that you took time out of your evening to come join us tonight. We have two very special recognitions. But before we get to that, I am going to invite up to the podium, and you may have noticed these incredibly talented, charismatic young women who were up here a moment ago. These are the state champions from Jones High School, the reigning 5A state champions Tonight, team captain Moesha Peterson will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Moment of Silence, and then we're going to brag a little bit on these young ladies. Moesha, welcome.
Will everybody please stand and bow your heads for a moment of silence? Thank you, and now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you, Moesha, thank you so much. Well, as you heard us mention, or me mention a moment ago, the Jones High School Girls' Basketball Team captured their, not first, not their second, but their third state title in February after defeating rival Florida High School from Tallahassee. Congratulations again, ladies, that's incredible.[112.11][112.11][applause] They did not even make it close, they dominated Florida High, they won 56 to 44 at the Lakeland Center, and I understand that it was quite the celebration when they won, that there were screams, jubilation, all about, and if I know my Jones High community, that's probably the understatement of the year. They played incredible, it says man-to-man defense, I'm going to say woman-to-woman defense, shut them down before taking their biggest lead of the game in the third quarter, 38 to 24, with a final score again of 56 to 44. The Tigers now hold state titles in 2017, 2004, and in 1997. And as I went down just a moment ago, the line shaking the ladies' hands, I was asking a number of them, juniors, seniors, and I was stunned how many of them are underclassmen, so I think it bodes well for 2018 as well. Can we say "to Pete"? We can say "to Pete."[171.45][171.45][applause] So, congratulations Tigers. I am going to recognize individually a number of them, and then I'm going to turn it over to probably the proudest school board member in the entire state of Florida, Mrs. Kat Gordon. And I never, none of us, ever want to follow Mrs. Gordon, and you'll see why here in a moment. She'll have them all fired up by the time we're done, and she is so proud of her Tigers. So let me begin by introducing and asking to stand head coach Robert Multry. Assistance coach, Orangie Maxwell.[210.12][210.12][applause] Athletic director, De'Ani Desadié.[217.56][217.56][applause] Team members, Jemaya Turner.[224.73][224.73][applause] Felicia Schumate.[230.65][230.65][applause] Shanaya Jacobs.[236.15][236.15][applause] Chardell Jones.[241.65][241.65][applause] Minique Schuman.[246.93][246.93][applause] Joanie Thomas.[252.62][252.62][applause] Joanie, did I say that right, even close?[258.14][258.14][laughter] I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can you tell me, how do I pronounce that correctly?
Gianna.
Gianna, I'm sorry. Gianna Thomas, let's give it up for Gianna.[266.64][266.64][applause] Moesha Peterson.[271.22][271.22][applause] Tamiya Davis.[276.16][276.16][applause] Alexandra Labadee.[282.08][282.08][applause] Alexandra, did I pronounce that right?
It's Labadee.
Okay.
Labadee.
Labadee, okay, I'm sorry. Alexandra, I was worried about the first name, not the last name.[300.14][300.14][laughter] You threw me there. Alexandra Labadee.[303.14][303.14][applause] Trinity Bryan.[308.02][308.02][applause] Analanta Partee.[313.64][313.64][applause] Ladies and gentlemen, your reigning, defending, state 5A champions are the Lady Tigers, Jones And you know what? I'm going to take the privilege of the chair and ask all those proud parents to stand up and let us recognize these great parents, too, raise these young ladies.[338.03][338.03][applause] And if there are any other teachers or administrators from Jones, please join them and stand as well. Let us recognize all their teachers and administrators. Thank you.[354.62][354.62][applause] All right, y'all may be seated, and let me turn it over to Mrs. Gordon, Mrs. Kat Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you so very much. Remember, you know, we chuckle up here because Ms. Caddell generally comes with a whole slew of everything from Winter Park High, but tonight, it's a Tigers' night, and I just think that that's awesome, and we just thank Superintendent and her staff for making this happen for us. We wanted to try to get you in earlier, but we felt that this would be even a better time for the month of April, because all of the hoopla could be gone, but we wanted you to know how this board loves you and appreciates you and wanted to celebrate you tonight. I know that Coach Harper, when I speak, he's in my heart because of the time in '97 and 2004, and then even now. My daughter played on the team for Jones High, top basketball player at Jones High. And Orangie, just stand up, Orangie. I want y'all to see, now she's not the only one, but Orangie, she's very young, but she's about my oldest student at Jones High, who is on the faculty and staff there. So, Orangie, she's the assistant coach, and she came out of Orange Center and a whole lot of other schools in our community, and you know her mom, Mrs. Maxwell. Everybody knows Ms. Maxwell, so Orangie, we are very proud of you because you did not leave the community, and you never gave up on Jones, and we love you. I taught her in elementary school.[447.12][447.12][applause] Coach Multry, if you would stand, I've never seen him dressed up.[456.31][456.31][laughter] He told me, yes, he cleans up well, Mr. Chairman, and it tickled me, I said, well, I said, you women, now tell me, he was going, I see you from the other side of the court. But I want you to know how much we appreciate you, and for you to have this win under your belt, this will follow you for the rest of your life. You're going to go down in history as one of the top coaches in the state of Florida, and really, in high school basketball. You have led these young ladies to terrific stardom, and I know that the parents behind you have been very supportive of you, and we appreciate you as the coach of the Jones High Lady Tigers. So we thank you so very much.[498.12][498.12][applause] And then Mr. Frank, Mr. Frank is out there. Let me see, our assistant principal? Yes. I know you, this is, our principal is elsewhere tonight, so he's at the Rose in Shingle Creek, one of my favorite places. They're doing the Cornell Students tonight, and we're usually out there for the Tangilo Project, and you know that they're helping us with the new OCPSA school. So he's there tonight, but this is an honor for you to be here at this board, and we thank you for the role as an assistant principal in working with the students of Jones. You have been very, very supportive, and we thank you so very much.[541.04][541.04][applause] And then there are other faculty and staff, the cheerleading coaches out there. You cannot win a game, ladies, without the cheerleaders. So with all the former cheerleading coaches and those that helped the cheerleading coaches, will you just stand? Because you all have been great, and where are you? Yeah, there they are, righty. Yes. These ladies have just been great, and you know that was my forte, being a cheerleader. I'm telling you, and I've always loved that, but we want to thank you for giving us this opportunity. We are very proud of you. You are going down for us. Somebody said, what about the Hall of Fame? That might be something, but it'll be a whole lot of others. So we may have to create a sports Hall of Fame, especially at the board level, when you go out and win a championship, so that we can see that Winter Park and Timber Creek and a lot of other schools there, we have a lot of winning schools in Orange County, but for you to just come out of District 5 and just win this thing, it was phenomenal. So we thank you, and we love you, and thank you, Madam Superintendent, thank you, Board Chair, and thank this board for supporting Jones High School. We love you.[615.16][615.16][applause]
Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say to the Lady Tigers, congratulations. See, when you win, we all win, and I feel this win just as much as if it was Timber Creek or whatever. So Kat Gordon, you know, congratulations on your group. You win. Now, I think you should take up a collection, though, because you've got one of your dads back there, he's filming this, so I've got it on tape. He's wearing an orange and green t-shirt that says Jones High Football.[645.32][645.32][laughter] So we want to see that. Lady Tigers, Jones Basketball, okay? So you got to chip in and get him a t-shirt.[656.04][656.04][laughter] Seriously, to the coach, to the faculty, to the students, thank you for representing us so proudly.
Well, congratulations again, and on behalf of the board, I particularly want to thank you and commend your parents. I understand from speaking to a number of your teachers and administrators that not only are you all great athletes, but you're wonderful role models on campus, and you're great students, and that just means the world to this board. So congratulations again, Lady Tigers, we're so very, very proud of you.[690.12][690.12][applause] Well, tonight, we have another wonderful partner in education to recognize, and we're going to recognize a number of our students for their incredible talent this evening. Orange County Utilities for years has been a tremendous partner in education of ours and a tremendous friend to Orange County Public Schools, and you're going to hear about a program that they run for us each and every year to promote the wonderful artistic talent that we have in our schools, and we have a number of our young artists here with us today that we are going to recognize. So I'd like to introduce up to the podium, representing Orange County Utilities, Ms. Jackie Torbert. Ms. Torbert is the manager of our Water Division, Orange County Utilities, and every day, every year, they do this wonderful calendar contest in our contests, and Jackie comes before us every year. Good to see you again, Jackie. I was wondering where you were, I was looking around for you, beyond the podium over there.
Hi, ma'am.
And thank you again. So give it up for Jackie Torbert, please.[753.12][753.12][applause]
Good evening to Chairman Sablet and to all the board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and especially to all of our artists, their teachers and principals, and equally important are the families of these talented young citizens of Orange County. This night is always special to me and my team for so many reasons, but the most important reason of all is that this project unites and celebrates Florida's two most important and precious resources, our kids and our drinking water. We issued a challenge to our Orange County School students at all grade levels to use their artistic talents to express their sense of pride about the environment and the community in which they live. I'm here tonight to celebrate those students that exceeded in that challenge. We had a challenge in Orange County of our very own, and that was to select the artwork that would be featured in this year's calendar. We had more than 200 pieces of artwork to select from, so what you have before you tonight is going to be the creme de la creme. But together, we did this with Kristen, Christie, and I'm going to ask Christie to kind of come forward and share a few words, if she will. She's your visual art resource teacher, and Christie, if you could come forward and share a few words.
Thank you so much. I just want to say how excited that I am about this partnership and the opportunities that it creates for our students to share their art with the community. This partnership is successful because of the enthusiastic involvement of the visual arts teachers and the unyielding support of our principals. Thank you again.
Well, if time permits, I would like to share with you the student artwork for the 2017 calendar, and I'm going to do that in a PowerPoint format, if that's okay? Great. So what I'm going to ask is if the student, teacher, and principal is here, as you see your artwork, if you could stand and be recognized, I would appreciate it. Also, we're going to ask if the audience could just hold all of their enthusiasm and applause until we get to the end. Freedom Middle School, we have Karina Batia. Is Karina here? Karina's your teacher here?
She's on the way.
Principal?
She's on the way.
Okay. Well, Karina was the cover artwork for this year's calendar. So that's what you see before you now. Yasmina, who's from Discovery Middle School, along with her teacher Felicia Roberts and Gloria Fernandez, the principal. Congratulations. Discovery Middle School, Laura Tol Lintino is your principal here? Just your teacher? Okay. Carolina from West Creek Elementary School. She's our March art piece. And I see her teacher and perhaps principal and/or parent is here?
We're all here.
Andover Elementary School. Is Hila here? Still a beautiful art piece for April. Wyndham Lakes Elementary School. This is a second grader. And here she is, can you guys see her here? She actually is here.[1016.62][1016.62][laughter] Angie is here with us today. Thank you, Angie. West Ridge Middle School, Heather, is Heather here? Heather, is your teacher here? This is the June artwork. Cypress Park Elementary School, is Julia here? There's Julia, she's a little tot as well, but she's here. Her parents are in the back, along with her teacher.
Mr. Mendez.
And principal. Akoi High School. Can you help me with your name? May Wish? Beautiful name. Our August celebrant. Metro West Elementary School, Gabrielle is here. Gabrielle's teacher.
The principal.
And principal are here. Assistant principal, congratulations. Discovery Middle School, Ivana. Colonial High School, Kevan, who has his principal here. And teacher. And parent. Assistant principal, November. Oakshire Elementary School. Paolo Lopez, gorgeous artwork. And we also had a rain barrel contest, and we want to share those with you. I know you guys have actually purchased some of these rain barrels before, but we want to say that the schools, the kids get first dibs on all of the artwork and the rain barrels, but after that, they're up for grabs. Avalon Middle School students, are you guys here? Congratulations. These are all seventh graders, Serena, Olivia, Lana, and Delaney. Thank you, ladies. Freedom Middle School, January, Jocelyn, Dylann, Karina, these are eighth graders. Colonial High School. Congratulations again. Kayla Elias, February. Apopka Middle School, Stop the Flow. This was the March rain barrel. Skylar, Ashlyn, Hunter, and Emily from Apopka Middle. Colonial High School. Isn't that a beautiful sunset? Congratulations. I might hear a big roar here tonight. Jones High School.[1247.04][1247.04][applause] Is Zoe here? Yes, Zoe is here. And Rashay. Rashay?
Sharad.
Sharad, excuse me. Avalon Middle School. We have Madison, Olivia, Catherine, and Sophia. These are all seventh graders from Avalon Middle School. Congratulations, ladies. Lake Nona High School, Kiara is a 12th grader, Madeline is a 12th grader, and they worked with 11th graders as well, Shannon and Jelicia. Lake Nona High School, again. Ryan, Christian, Tiffany, and Olivia, ranging from 10th grade to 12th grade. August. Here we go again, Jones High School.[1315.54][1315.54][applause] Deja and Sharad, and Trevana and Zoe, ranging from 10th to 11th graders. Akoi High School. Congratulations. Is this Stephanie? Congratulations to your students. I think somebody might want this with the soccer group, you know? Let's see. Freedom Middle School, Lana, Kiana, Casey, and Natalie, all eighth graders from Freedom Middle School. Akoi High School. Again. Stephanie, again. We appreciate the talents that we have in Orange County and the commitment from our students, but we could not do this without partners, and we do have a long-term partner, McCoy Federal Credit Union, and I think in the audience, we should have, stand ladies, Cheryl Cook and Danielle Mallory. I'd like to publicly thank them for their continued support, and last but not least, I want to thank all of you for allowing us to present these water conservation ambassadors to you tonight, and thank you.[1418.33][1418.33][applause]
Ms. Torbert, thank you so much for Orange County Utilities sponsoring this. McCoy Federal Credit Union, thank you very, very much, and I'm not sure it's clear to people at home, but the artwork goes into this beautiful calendar that's made every year, and I've seen these in McCoy Federal Credit Union branches, I've seen them in Orange County Utilities and all throughout the county, so these kids should be very, very, very proud. I'd like to take this opportunity, though, to recognize a group of people that we rarely get to recognize publicly, and that's our wonderful art teachers. We have tremendous art teachers. Can they all stand? Every art teacher in here, please stand so we can recognize you. Please stand. Thank you. I have two children currently in Orange County Public Schools, a number of board members do, I have one that just graduated, and I can tell you, my kids have been the beneficiary of just tremendous art instruction that blows away anything I had when I was a child, so I'm just always so incredibly impressed by the talent of our art teachers. Mrs. Robinson.
I too just want to add my congratulations to the students, you guys worked really hard. You can tell because they're all so intricately done and so beautiful, and I want to always thank our wonderful connections with OUC and with McCoy Federal, and it's just such a wonderful partnership to bring all this together. And I don't know about you guys, but I had rain for the first time at my house in weeks today, and it was exciting to see some rain, so they're right, we need to conserve the water, and I was very blessed to buy one of the rain barrels from last year, and so I just want to put a plug out there to anyone who happens to be listening, it's $50, is it still $50? It's $50.
Still $50.
And it's a donation to the United Way, and they will deliver the rain barrel to your house, so you, too, can have your own rain barrel. And it might not be one of these, because these get chosen, as she said, the school and the students get first dibs, but they have some from years past that have not yet been purchased. So, and everyone that comes in, I have it by my front door in my garden, and people say, that is beautiful, where'd you get it? I said, oh, our students did it. So, anyway, congratulations, you guys are all fabulous, and thank you for making us always look so good.
Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to wait until both groups had been recognized, that way I could speak just once. We are extremely proud of the Jones Tiger Girls Team and very proud as well of all of our winners for the art contest for conservation. Here's what we know, when we have partnerships where parents are engaged and students feel that other adults are concerned and engaged in their success, their actual achievement levels rise, and so for every parent, both for our athletic team and for the arts program that has been engaged and doing extra work, I want to commend each of you along with our students, and it never goes without saying how much we appreciate our fine teachers and the work that they do, so much done beyond the actual school day for projects like these. And so I want to thank both teachers in the art program and coaches who put in tireless hours with our young people, all beyond the school day to help them reach success. It's just a tribute as well that we depend on our entire community to support us and support our students and help lead them to success. So thank you to Orange County as well.
Thank you.
Well, with that, I think what the board would like to do is, if I could have all the winners come up front, just sort of parade in front of us, starting down at this, and we're going to give you a high five, okay, for your wonderful work, or a fist bump, and then we're going to pause and recess and let everybody else head home, because it is a school night, but let's have the winners come on up front, and if you could start and just, down here at the left-hand side, and let us give you a high five.[1660.04][1660.04][applause] And let's have the team come up as well, again, we'd like to shake their hand as well.
We're high-fiving each other. You're welcome. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I know you said we can't get them until later. She said she has got to have a barrel. She got to have a barrel. And she want it, I'll do it, I'll purchase it for her. My address. She said she got to have, she been asking me for a whole year. I told you, you going to have to wait maybe till they pay you.
We're going to make sure...
We gonna make sure that the students don't want them.
I know.
And then we'll get them to you.
Right, but she's Jones. But just call her and maybe we can get her a calendar. You got any shoe on you?
I didn't bring it with me. But I'm gonna get it to you, okay?
Oh, okay. You sure? I'll give it to her and then I'll tell her these are just some. If you got some from last year.
You got some others as well.
But if you call her, maybe she can meet you and take a look at.
Do I have her?
Her number's on it.
Yep, I have. So I can get it to you?
Yeah. No, get the barrel. I'm down inside. Maybe I'm out of here. Six, six, six. I am. I am here now. I am. When I get ready, I'm gonna dance across the stage. You gotta know when to hold. Know when to roll again. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so maybe I'll see you guys again next year, huh?
I hope to. Believe me, can't retire yet.
What do we need?
I think we voted your presentation on there.
Yeah, I don't see a thumb drive. And thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
And we'll do much more together.
Yes. And so Kristi is now the head of visual arts for the district because Ashley took over dance and theater.
Oh, okay, so she didn't actually leave.
No, no, she's like two year old.
All right, board members. So we don't have a strategic plan update tonight. Let me make a preliminary announcement. Any individual who would like to address any item on our consent or non-consent agenda can do so by filling out a speaker card. It looks like this. You can obtain a speaker card from Ms. McGill, who's down at the far-left-hand side of the dais. And when that agenda comes before us, I will call on you. You will, at that time, have three minutes to address the board. And we will ask you to start with your address for the record, which is a legal requirement. Dr. Jenkins, I understand no administrators to recognize tonight, correct? Okay, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do, Chairman. Item 6.02 disciplinary matter for initial A.C. being removed to item 1702 non-consent. And then item 1501 is being withdrawn for consideration at a later time.
Okay, the chair finds cause to amend the agenda as suggested by the superintendent. Can I entertain a motion to do so? Is there a second? It's been seconded by Ms. Flynn, moved by Ms. Cadel. Is there any objection to that motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the agenda adopted. All right, board members, we are now on the consent agenda. We do have one speaker on the consent agenda, somebody well-known to us and admired, Ms. Wendy Dormall. Wendy, welcome, Ms. Dormall. And you know what? Let me play with my toy before you get up there, Wendy.
Last time it scared me.
There we go.
All right, thank you. All right. So first, I would just like to say good evening. And I want to thank the superintendent and the school board for considering the recognition of the psychologist into the Orange County Classroom Teacher Association. We're very proud that our union stands to advance the interests of our students, teachers, public education, and our profession. Our union sisters and brothers are teachers, social workers, nurses, instructional coaches, and guidance counselors, media specialists, and other instructional personnel. The psychologists represent a segment of personnel that play an essential and important role in students' well-being and academic achievement. Since September, I've had the privilege of working with the psychologists and getting to know them. They are outstanding. And we're working together to secure a place in our union, awed by their dedication and their commitment to our students. And I look forward to welcoming and securing a place for each of them into Orange County Classroom Teachers Association. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Well, thank you, Ms. Dormall. And we're joined tonight by a representative of our school psychologists. We're so thrilled to have you become part of the bargaining unit. And thank you for all that our school psychologists do for our children. It's greatly appreciated. All right, I don't believe I have any other speakers on the consent agenda. Saying none, can I entertain a motion to adopt a consent agenda? It's been moved by Ms. Moore. It's been seconded by Mrs. Gordon and Vice Chair Colbert. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Saying none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. All right, we are now on non-consent items. The first one, 17.01, which is request approval of the school board to select a name for School 52-M-S-E-2, the relief school opening in 2017, 2018. So let me go to Dr. Jenkins first. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. Dr. Fritsler will introduce this item very briefly.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Chairman Sublet, board members, and Dr. Jenkins. I'm here to present the naming resolution for 52-M-S-5E-2. The three names that are brought forward are Moss Park Middle, Innovation Middle, and Lake Hart Middle. Dr. Jenkins.
All right, Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody. I'd like to make a motion that the new middle school, 52-M-S-E-2, be named Innovation Middle School.
Moved by Ms. Flynn and seconded by Mrs. Robinson to name that school Innovation Middle School. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? I just want to commend you, Ms. Flynn. Really, I think it's a good body that's flexible and listens to the concerns of the community. So thank you for your leadership on this issue.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show it as done.
Well, the principal, oh, I'm sorry. The principal and the assistant principal of Innovation Middle School are here in the front row. So thank you very much. And a parent, Phyllis, Phyllis Tom. Kalil. One of the parents who spoke at the previous meetings here. So thank you very much for being here. I don't think anybody else. Okay. Chris, right? Chris Feldman. So thank you all. Thank you all very much. Mr. Chair, and it's going to be a fabulous middle school. And you all are going to be great parents and great principal, assistant principal, parent base. It's going to be awesome. In regard to the procedure, if we ever do look at it again, I think it's not so much the policy, but maybe a little bit more of a consistent message or procedure that we do out there. I think it would be a great help to the principal, to us, and just a little bit of tweaking on it. So I just wanted to bring that up in case we ever do consider that policy again. Not so much the policy, I think, it's just how we bring in those suggestions from the community. Thank you all very much.
Well, it's a great suggestion. And I've been talking to the superintendent about it and Mr. Rodriguez. And, you know, I think we need to start with a discussion, probably in early fall, about our naming policy. We really don't have much of a policy. If you ever go read it, they're very skeletal. So where we go on it? Yeah, where we go on it, I don't know. But, you know, we'll start with a work session to hear what the board members think and their ideas on it. Ms. Kalil and Chris, forgive me, I didn't catch your last name. Clark. I just want to. Yeah, I just want to thank you all. You were so incredibly professional and courteous in bringing this issue and constructive before us. So thank you for that approach. You know, that's usually the approach, but I can't say it's always the approach. And I just wish it was always the approach. And you all just set a tremendous example. So on how to bring an issue before the board. And we appreciate it immensely. Thank you. Thank you again, Ms. Flynn. All right, we are now on item 17.02. Let me make a preliminary announcement, then I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent. All board meetings are videotaped and aired on Orange TV in their entirety, with the exception of student discipline and employee matters. In keeping with school board policy, if a speaker refers to a student discipline case or employee matter, his or her comments will not be included in the broadcast version of the board meeting. So we're about to take up board members in the matter of A.C. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Jenkins. Dr. Jenkins. All right, board members. We're on agenda item 19, report by a school district general counsel. And we'll go to the superintendent's report. Mr. Rodriguez.
So Chair, members of the board. So to bring you an update on the Eatonville matter. Three weeks ago, when you all met as a board, there was a request to have an extension for two weeks, or three weeks, I should say, until tomorrow because they still had not finalized the agreement between the town of Eatonville and Up Development. Excuse me. During that period of time, or at least previous to it, there had been concerns about the stormwater drainage on the site. And there had been further conversations between DOT and meetings I attended with the lawyers for Up Development and folks from the town of Eatonville. They understood that there was an opportunity to perhaps modify the pond or modify how it was going to be shaped. But during the last three weeks, I'm a little troubled to report that the communication from the developer had slowed down considerably, to the point that Gray Robinson, I would call Gray Robinson because they represent the town. And the agreement is really between the town and the developer. And I would ask for updates. And repeatedly was told by the lawyers at Gray Robinson and the town that despite their best efforts, they were not getting adequate responses and good responses. There was no drafts were sent, no response that draft was sent. So yesterday, and actually last week, I called their lawyer for the developer, tried to discern what was the issue. Was told they would get back to me by the end of the day. Then it was by the end of the week. With no comment forthcoming, I put some correspondence in writing to them. And then yesterday morning, finally heard back from the developer. They explained that they have some concerns about the amount of stormwater drainage on site and host time and where their impact is, as well as what DOT's is. I explained to them that as a board, you've given the town of Eatonville an extension for three weeks and that if it's not met by tomorrow, that that could result in a default in the agreement and that they needed to work things out with the town. Between yesterday and today, the developer has made significant progress that the town is now asking for another two-week extension. I do not hold the town at all responsible for this because they have been diligent and they have been making efforts and trying to get a response from the developer. But I do think that in the interest of seeing if this will work, we ought to give this another two weeks and see if they put this property under contract. If they don't, however, I have shared with the developer and the town is well aware that we may have to rebid or find another solution to this property. And that would be entirely within your right under the original agreement. As a board, there's been certainly a desire to get this thing sold and move forward and develop for the sake of the town, the trust, the school board, and everyone else involved. But so my request is, is that I get consensus from the board to extend it for two weeks at the request of the town. Their attorney, and Mr. Roger Dixon, who is the city manager, just wanted me to make sure that I communicated to you as well. Their desire is to try this for another two weeks and that they do not want to be accused or considered to be the party at fault here. And I certainly agree with that assessment. We're hoping that the developer keeps their end of the bargain, enters, and puts this property under contract.
Well, you certainly have my support for an extension. You know, this has been a project 20-plus years in the making. So another couple of weeks, in my opinion, isn't going to affect us all that much. And I want to convey to the mayor and the town manager, we certainly don't in any way, even remotely, hold them responsible for any delays. They've been wonderful partners. Anybody have any objection to that? Or can we say we have consensus to allow any extension needed? Okay. Mr. Rodriguez, do you need more than that? Okay. All right. I'm going to go to Dr. Jenkins, who is our reigning newly-recognized, and I'm going to get this wrong, Hispanic-serving Superintendent of the Year. Did I say that correctly, Dr. Jenkins? Yeah, I was really very proud of you. And, you know, in all due seriousness, I know, I never know how many people watch this, but over a third of our district are students who identify as Latino. So I actually, all the awards and accolades you've won, this is one that's probably most important to me personally because it signifies this administration's commitment to our Latino students, our Hispanic students. So thank you. I know it's just one of a many, a long, long list of honors, Dr. Jenkins, but this one means the world to me personally and I think many of us on the board. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I am certainly humbled by this recognition. But I have to say, once again, it's certainly commendations to the outstanding staff that I work with, my leadership team, and to this board, who has supported our administrative initiatives to help all of our students be led to success. And it's too early to share some additional exciting news. But we are very proud of some aggressive strategies we've used to make sure our bilingual students are recognized for a tremendous strength that they bring. Knowing two languages, I envy them because I've been trying my Rosetta Stone version. And it's much harder to get a second language as an adult. So I really appreciate and commend and encourage our young people that are mastering two languages to be very proud of it. And so we recognize and celebrate rather than considering it as a disadvantage. But I also am pleased with partnerships we have with entities such as College Board, who are working aggressively with us to make sure we're able to help serve those students who have a second language and their first language is not English because they're going to give us another opportunity in very short order here to help lead those students to success. And it has to do with that concordance score that some of our Spanish-speaking students struggle with for the FSA. We are looking forward to some additional provisions through that partnership to help our students. I will tell you, our staff is very sensitive, certainly very aggressive. When they try to look at means of helping our students be successful. But for our English-language learners, we will go to every extent, to any means necessary, to help them get over that hurdle. Because they have to, in order to be successful in this community and in this country, they need that high school diploma. And so initiatives that we use here, we certainly would love to see replicated elsewhere. And there's more to come, if you'll stay tuned.
Okay. Again, kudos, Dr. Jenkins. Board members, and I, you know, I think Mr. Evans has, he left. I think Scott Evans has left. But he wanted me to point out to you, and I wish I'd done it during the calendar announcement. Our new artwork is in the boardroom. Someone could pass along to Mr. Evans that we did point that out, including maybe a piece that you selected in your selection. I think mine is back there at the very far left. Who picked what? I'm just sort of curious. You guys in a mood for, you don't remember? Okay. I'll tell you, mine's back there. But I'm just, I always feel like it's a professional gallery in here. It just amazes me, the talent of our students, so. I like it all. I like it all.
I do, too.
So. Before I go to committee reports also, you know, we have a very special presentation to make to one of our board members. Her tenure pin, Ms. Daryl Flynn. And I'm glad you're wearing a sweater. I can pin you. I wouldn't attempt otherwise.
Oh, thank you.
So congratulations. Mrs. Gordon says she never got a pin. Mrs. Gordon, you're getting a trophy by now. It's all as me. Congratulations, a tenure pin, tenure service pin. Yeah. Well, we'll look into that. I didn't, I'll be honest. Until an hour ago, I didn't even know we gave pins. Now, you're not the only one. All right. Committee reports. Ms. Gold, communications.
We had, we had, we had a meeting this afternoon with the communications committee and I'll just give you some of the highlights. We talked about the Hall of Fame and really our path towards our 150th anniversary. And we learned that the staff is looking at, and the foundation is looking at trying to do one between now and our 150th, which is in 2020. So stay tuned on dates and some concepts on that. It was highly successful. I can't do that percentage method because it's too high in my head, but we have some wonderful funding for some STEM activities for the most underserved and homeless students in our district because of this event. So not only is it great to recognize our graduates, but it's also going to pay it forward to helping some of our students, which is phenomenal. The foundation also reported on their work in the strategic plan and how that's aligning and we're going to be hearing more about that at a future board meeting, so I'll leave that part for that board meeting. We, at our next communication meeting, we're going to kind of have a little work session on the tools of communication, especially when there's a lot of interesting and focused topics and a lot of misinformation or misunderstanding about education out in the world of media and the community conversation and how we can handle crisis stories, what tools are at our disposal, what the communications team is doing, and then how we as board members can be better communicators with our constituents and our legislators and in our community in general. So we're going to have a little focus session on that. And Ms. Flynn and Ms. Colbert also reported on the recent communication with legislatures and their trip to Tallahassee. And there is a bill that would be very positive in the Senate for us and we talked about sharing what is going on in that bill and there'll be more that comes out in a recap of that in the next couple of days for the board members to use. So those were kind of the highlights of our meeting and I think that we're moving some strong initiatives forward and really trying to focus our communications in a more targeted fashion.
That's a terrific report. Thank you for your leadership on this, Ms. Gold, very much. Ms. Flynn, legislative.
Thank you. We had the Florida School Board Association's Legislative Conference just this past week and Ms. Christine Moore, Mrs. Linda Colbert and I attended and spent two days and want to commend Eileen Fernandez and Cody Woody as being our legislative liaisons up there. They do a tremendous job and Mr. Scott Howitt was up there as well for a day. So I want to thank them because they worked very hard to get meetings for us and keep us up to date with all the intricacies of this legislation. But every year when I go up there, I think it can't get worse and it does. So it's 24 hours of just really some disheartening legislation and I'm not going to go over all of it, but this is all of the bills that impact education. I would say most of them aren't good. So, or for us, anyway. I want to thank Ms. Moore and Ms. Colbert for really carrying the water on the day that we were supposed to go and visit legislators because I was on the nominating committee for the FSBA and that sort of knocked out that day. So I wanted to thank them. They visited all of our legislators. And I just wanted to give just a couple of highlights on two bills and then pass it over to Ms. Colbert because she's been phenomenal in just sort of dissecting the legislation. She stayed up there on Monday to make sure if she had to testify and we might have to go up there again later to really push a point, but I wanted to thank her for doing that. You know, in regard to charters, there's a bill that would sort of pre-approved a set of charters that can just come into a so-called failing school area and all of a sudden just sort of take it over with more funding, you know, more favoritism just because, you know, these other schools are failing. So that's a little bit disturbing. There's one that would send alternative charter students' assessment scores back to their homeschool, designated homeschool, even in regard to some private schools that are getting, students are receiving vouchers, would take those scores back, you know. Right. I know. I mean, it just doesn't make sense, you know. I mean, one school's not, one school is educating them, the other school isn't, but you know, let's send it back to them. And we worked hard a few years ago to get that SIR rating, School Improvement Rating, so that alternative schools wouldn't be subjected to past failing but maybe needs improvement or on track. The other one is, would give some of our discretionary millage going to eligible charter schools, some of those schools are the ones that are the municipalities. So I think it applies to three here in Orange County. Now, we already share some of our special millage, but this goes to that discretionary 1.5 mills that they can get a portion on. So those were some pretty, like I said, just every year it goes, it's more. What we really want to do, and I'm going to let Ms. Colbert speak to the bill that at first sight is not a positive one, but with amendments makes it positive for our students. But we do need to get the word out there. We're going to work with Wendy Dormel and the CTA to have a positive cohesive message that we can put out there on Facebook, obviously not on the OCPS because that's political, but on ours, working with, getting a message so that there can be a call-in. So with that, Mr. Chair, that's my quick report. I want to thank everybody for their support on this and I'll let Ms. Colbert explain the good, the bad and the possibly ugly, maybe not, on that Senate bill.
Ms. Colbert.
So you got to deliver the bad news. I'll deliver the hope.
Schools of hope, that's right. Schools of hope.
No, no, this is the hope for public schools. So there is one bill. It is Senate Bill 926 by Senator Flores, House Bill 773 by Representative Diaz. In the Senate, it has been amended and I want to talk to you about those amendments that make this a great bill for education for us. And then we'll talk about next steps. Senate Bill 926 was amended yesterday favorably and those amendments are as follows. The first would eliminate four of the six state mandated end-of-course exams. Those courses are geometry, civics, algebra II and US history. This is something parents have been asking for consistently is to eliminate standardized tests. The second pertains to allowing school districts to use national exams like the SAT, ACT, AP, IB and industry certifications. Those scores could be used in lieu of the FSA and substituted for those. Eliminating the FSA for some students and the redundancy of taking another test when they've already shown proficiency and achievement on AP exams, SATs, ACTs, IB exams, et cetera, that eliminates that redundancy and again, would return instructional time to our classrooms and save a lot of money. Again, something parents have been asking for. There was language in this bill, SB 926, that it's called the proficiency language. And what it did was align FSA requirements for proficiency to NAP. NAP was never meant to be used in any kind of accountability system and it would again raise those required scores and hinder many more students from graduating, label many more students and schools failing completely unnecessarily. So this amendment removes that proficiency requirement. I want to make clear, an example of what that language would have done would have required a 10th grade student taking the FSA to receive a score that would be a college-level entry score level. And that would have knocked a lot of students out of the ability to graduate from high school, made it very, very difficult. Again, unnecessary, increased fail rates and frankly, what businesses, in my opinion, would want to come to Florida if we're self-labeling our students as failures when that standard is not helpful to students. So raising those cut scores, again, it's moving the goalpost again. Goalpost has been removed repeatedly over the last five years. New common core standards, new Florida standards, changes of tests to the FSA raise the standards again. It's time to stop moving the goalpost. So this is another good amendment. The next amendment returns much of the autonomy over the teacher evaluation system to the districts. It makes VAM optional and it removes a lot of languages that districts are required to follow from the state mandate on teacher evaluations, changing the language from must or shall to may. And so that gives us a lot more leeway to create a teacher evaluation system, good for teachers and that is a better reflection. And again, the flexibility, making the VAM optional and with these tools is the, gives us the potential to eliminate possibly hundreds of end-of-course exams. The next amendment gives districts the option of using paper and pencil where they see fit. We are completely digital in our high school level and moving that to middle school, but this gives districts the option to do that where it's necessary for lack of hardware or where they believe certain grades might benefit. And the last one, which I'm very excited about because teachers consistently are asking us for more flexibility and autonomy, removes the word consecutive from the language that requires a 90-minute consecutive reading block for elementary schools. So they'll still be required to have 90 minutes of reading, but it doesn't have to be consecutive so they can take a break, change it up, do what the teachers know in their professional capacity that they need to do. So this bill also, those are the six good amendments that we're supporting. The next step will be to have those amendments put into House Bill 773 sponsored by Representative Diaz. So what we'll need is everyone's help to move the House to amend the bill accordingly. A couple of other things that this bill still does, which are good, will be to move the testing window to the last four or five weeks of the school year as opposed to March and April. Make reports from standardized testing, FSA, reports for parents and teachers much more easy to read, much more user-friendly so that that information can be used for teachers to inform instruction. It also, believe it or not, allows school board members to visit their own schools. We're very excited about that because believe it or not, there are some districts where that's not an option. Not here, we're very, very involved in our schools. And that is, that's a, I know, that's a, that's a good summation of the bill. But I can't stress enough how important Senate Bill 926, House Bill 773 is to public education this year. Again, the heavy lift will be to amend the bill in the House to match the Senate bill and that will be our priority over the next couple of weeks. So we will be putting out information on how parents, teachers and community members can help do that. And I just can't stress enough how important this is, the good that it would do. And the final thing I want to say is that our very own Central Florida Senator David Simmons is the main person we have to thank. So these amendments are, the architect of these amendments is Senator Bill Monford up in Tallahassee. However, Senator Bill, Senator David Simmons carried the water on this, did all the maneuvering, all of the legwork to get these good amendments put into this bill to change a bill that really could have done some harm with its proficiency language to a bill that will tremendously benefit public schools. So we thank Senator Simmons for his help and we'll be relying on the rest of our Central Florida delegation for help in supporting this bill. I think that about covers it.
Thank you for all your work up there, Ms. Flynn, Ms. Colbert and other board members who have actually gone up there. And we will definitely recognize Senator Simmons after this and, you know, and if you can help us identify other members of our delegation who have been very supportive on this, I think it's important enough that we invite them to a school board meeting and do a public recognition. Ms. Moore.
I just punched my button. I don't have a committee report, but we just celebrated our eighth annual Pop Garden Jazz Festival this past Saturday and we had good weather. I think we'd had three years of wind, rain, cold. It's amazing what can happen when you have good weather. So it was our first time we actually, for one of the consortiums, completely filled the amphitheater and had standing room only. So that was really, really exciting. So Mr. Wright started kite flying and when I told the children some of the activities that they could do, kite flying was at the top of the interest list. So we have plans potentially to add a little more of that next year. So it's always fun, after eight years, I do it another eight. It's just, it's just so joyful and the mayor was there and he actually had other obligations and he was there and he was there and he was there. So what's going on? He goes, I just can't leave, just looking at all these children having such a good time on the property that it just, it just drew him to stay with us longer than he had planned. So I thank the staff, the area superintendents, the fine arts staff, Scott Evans and Ashley Spirell, of course, they had people with them. Dr. Jenkins made it out, as did Dr. Jar and we just had a wonderful, wonderful time. So thank you.
Kudos to you, Ms. Moore. I know that's your baby and you birthed that, so congratulations. You should be very, very proud. Ms. Cadle.
Well, I told you at the pre-agenda meeting, but I just wanted on the record, you all have a CD from Winter Park High School, Naughty Scotty and the Acapella is the boys' acapella group that Naughty Scotty ended up graduating and going to Florida State and I think he started an acapella group there. This is compliments of Matthew Swope, who directs, directs the chorus and Naughty Scotty and Take Seven have just finished working on their second CD. This is the first one the girls have done. So I just wanted you to hear these voices and they sent me one at Christmas time and it'll just lift your spirits when you're having one of those days. So thank you to Winter Park High School and Naughty Scotty for putting a smile on our face. This is the time of year that I love and it's because all of the spring musicals are happening at all of our schools. And I'm going to put a really cheap plug in for one school because if you go on Facebook and you look at University High School and you see the set they are designing for Cinderella and the detail that's in the horse and the detail that's in the carriage, it would be a wonderful day to go out and see Rodgers and Hammerstein, Cinderella. And they do something really cool. They do a Sunday afternoon show at 2:00 and they invite the young people in the audience to come up on stage and visit with the actors and actresses and they usually have punching cookies or, you know, something for them. I think, I think when they did Little Mermaid, they might have charged $5 a child to go up there. It's a fundraiser for them. But if you don't have anything to do and you want to just see fantastic set designs and, I mean, the horse, I just can't wait to see if the robotics team has programmed the horse because it looks like the way its legs are, it looks like it's going to move. I'm not sure, but I guess. The other thing is that our own WWE celebrity is not here tonight because she had to take her son to the airport, but Anna Diaz was recognized as a community leader for leading the reading challenge with Orange County Public Schools. So it was a surprise to her on Saturday night, I think it was, that she received on Facebook, it looks like it's a framed belt, it's her WWE framed belt and it has her name on it. And she was surprised and she said, of course, every place else you go, it's a stage, but not there. She had to get in the ring. So they, they helped her up.
On her heels. I'm sure she had on her heels.
No, she had flats on.
Thank goodness.
She had flat, she had flat sandals on, the best that I can tell. But her son from San Diego was here because I guess that's what they like to do together. So, I mean, she did all of the events all weekend long and so when you see her, she's our WWE superstar. And if you look at her on Facebook, she has put some pictures there. So when you see her, be sure to congratulate her. And I think that's all the cheap plugs I have for right now.
That was a cool report, Ms. Cadle. Thank you. Mrs. Robinson? Mrs. Robinson.
I have a cool plug, too. When, when we were congratulating the Jones High Women's Basketball Team earlier, it got me thinking, the last several years, and they're in a different division, but Edgewater Girls, if y'all remember, the Edgewater Girls Basketball Team won the state multiple years in a row. Last year, they didn't. They didn't come close enough. They were at the very tail end, but they didn't win. But one of the young ladies from that team that graduated in the spring was on the national championship team at South Carolina. So we have an Edgewater graduate that just won the national championship on the ladies. Yeah, her name is Victoria Patrick. So Victoria Patrick was on the, she's the gamecock. She's a lady gamecock, and South Carolina beat Mississippi State to win the national championship. So that's exciting. So it might not have won the, her team might not have won, but she got, she's at South Carolina playing, and she just won the national, I think she'd take the national championship over the state championship any day. You know, you get a ring and everything. But anyway, so I just want to, want to mention that. Congratulations to, to Victoria, and congratulations for, you know, making OCPS look so good nationally. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Flynn.
Are we at the point where we can bring up things that we might, okay. This is, is, is just maybe we can put a couple of things on Facebook or awareness, but as the weather gets really hot and the heat index, we might want to, I don't know, remind parents to provide their kids with hats or sunscreen or that type of thing, sunscreen. Just, just as an awareness, I just thought I'd, I'd bring that up. I have a constituent who is concerned about this, but it is not something that I want to dictate, or even dictate to a parent what they put on their child, or, or have a mandate. But I think it is a, a good public awareness type of effort that we could possibly do to just remind parents of, and staff, I guess, of the potential safety concerns when it comes to being out in the sun. There's much more awareness these days about it, not like the old days, not like the old days. Remember that?
Oh, yeah.
We'd have baby oil and everything else. Those were the days. But, but you know what? There is a much more of an intelligent awareness of the dangers of, of sun, and I think we should recognize that. So, thank you.
Great suggestion. Mrs. Gordon, give us a report on FSBA, please.
They've given on FSBA, so I'll bring us up on the national level, and I want to give you a ride, a lot of stuff. I do want to say the National School Board Association, annual conference, Dr. Lawson would love this, since he was a top administrator, in San Antonio, Texas. So we need to mark our calendars, the lawyers included, the entire lawyer staff. We should be presenting our legal department with a presentation. I would like to see us really present. I'd like to see us present the, the OCPSA school also, Dr. Jenkins, and to the board, because the new NSBA president from New Jersey is looking for innovative ideas that you have done in your district to help improve public education. And I just think that our COV Committee and our facilities and all of the schools that we have built, some kind of way, we need to be presenting that to let schools see how they could do it. We did all of that without the State Department of Education helping us to build over 100 schools. I think that's remarkable over course of time. So April the 7th to April the 9th, mark your calendar, we will be in San Antonio, Texas with the National School Board Association. I do want to say that with the National School Board Association, we, we heard many speakers. I was not there alone. School Board Member Colbert was there, and also School Board Member Pam Ghul. So we all went different ways, different workshops. We usually meet up together. But I was able to get into Steve Pemberton, a change in the world. And the neatest thing is that practically everybody presented us a free book, so I guess it was part of registration. Judge Glenda Hatchett was phenomenal, as always. Dare to take charge. Hope to live your life on purpose. It was so many things, and I'm sure that Ms. Colbert was add something to the National School Board, and also Ms. Pam Ghul. In reference to, we really want to, both organizations, and I'm going to give a little bit about the Council of Great City Schools, where Dr. Diaz was there, and Dr. McCalvi. They were there along with School Board Member Flynn, School Board Member Cadle, and myself in Washington. So that report is forthcoming, and you will have that at the next board meeting. Both organizations are trying to say to us, and I think we wrote a note when we were in Washington, we are extending the olive branch to the Commissioner, U.S. Commissioner of Education, because her father, you know, has a foundation here with the magic. And we were not able to ask her any questions whatsoever, but we were able to print questions to give to her. I don't think anybody that I've spoken with yet that was in the room that we have communicated with have heard from her, and I know that she's very busy. But we have asked her to extend the olive branch and, and make it a magical thing to be, to come to Orlando. And when she come to Orlando, to include public schools. She did go to Osceola, but she only included Valencia and invited the superintendent of Osceola County. So, which was kind of odd, because the superintendent of Osceola County is not responsible for Valencia, but she did get an invitation. You got invited? Okay, well, that didn't hit the news. So we've kind of felt that, that, that both superintendents should have been at St. Andrews, and they both should have been in Kissimmee. So did you all get to talk with her at all? Okay, very good. Did she answer any questions? Okay, never mind. Okay, thank you. Well, the biggest thing is that we are looking for answers. One thing, both organizations really want them to know that we're in this together. We are public education, and we are the ones that can show her where the problem areas are. She's not aware of where the areas are. When you walk into the Council of Great City Schools and you have every urban large district school sitting there, that is where your problems are, and they could work on that. So I think this is what they're trying for us to extend. The next thing is that in, we did get a lot of laws. The biggest thing right now is the, the ESE, the ESA laws that they are talking about. The LEA data is very important. They let us know that that data has been released. I think Dr. Brian, I think Brandon McCalvi and Dr. Diaz is going to get that information to us, because we had asked them that day if they are going to bring what was shared, because I think you were there a little longer than we were, if that information can be shared with the board, okay? And Dr. Jenkins is shaking her, her head to that. There was a lot of legal information passed to us, the immigration policy. We had a complete briefing on the immigration policy with the Council of Great City Schools, and we also had a briefing with the National School Board Association. So basically, both organizations are basically doing the same thing. The L, what is it? The L, right, Q, right. That community is very, very important to us. It is a community that we cannot overlook. It is a community that must be talked about. Our relationships with boards must be talked about. We must talk. I'll put it that way. Because if we don't, then we're, we're just going to keep going along, thinking that everything is all right, basically when, when it is not. So the biggest thing here is that everybody is concerned. Equality is a big thing. And they want us to pay attention to, they really want us to pay attention to that. Also, Mary Broderick was one of the former superintendents, no, one of the past president and school board member of NSBA. And she has teamed up with her superintendent, who has retired, and they are out presenting a workshop called 2020 Vision. And that 2020 vision is basically for board members that deal with major issues in our district. The magnet schools, funding, staffing, enrollment, and budget. And I'm trying to get their presentation. I think Dr. Cockwright, I placed some of it out there on the internet, and she found it to be very interesting. So I'm trying to get Ms. McGill and her staff to pull in the entire presentation, which would be very helpful to us, because it talks about minority students and where they're going. You must talk about African-American male. And not only that, and I know Dr. Lawson is doing a great job in that, but you have to talk about the African-American and Hispanic students, even though that's basically what most school systems are turning to, most school systems. The enrollment is pretty much going up on the enrollment of African-American students, and it's going up on Hispanic students. They feel that this is something that the board has got to create a good culture and recognize that culture, and also recognizing the staff. And Dr. Jenkins is very good at that. I think each of us, as a board member, we are very good at recognizing our schools and the, the staff members in it. But they said, to recognize those staff, it means a lot. Even inviting students, simple as, simple as this, inviting students to come and sit in our seats. And then, when you do the science fair, which I was at Millennium Gardens the other night, and Millennium Elementary School, and they did an awesome science fair. It was jam-packed with parents, faculty, and staff members, and they gave those kids a white coat. And even at my school, at the book fair last week, they gave, this week, they gave the kids a white coat. And they put the white coat on, and they were taking the blood pressures and everything, and they just felt totally different. And that's what one of the main speakers said. She said, "If you give, just give them a white coat. You know, take them in your car if you're an automobile dealership." And I think we do a lot of this with our careers, but they said, "You'll be surprised." To bring that student, let them sit in the superintendent's chair. And I remember when you had a student, and I shared that with them, that you had monitored you all day. You know, that was really neat, and you brought that person to the board that night. And I think that that would always be a lasting memory. So basically, you will get a detailed report of many of the speakers at the, in Denver at NSBA. And also, you will get a report from us on the Council of Great City Schools. And I need to just see if Ms. Flynn and Ms. Cadle wants to add anything on the Washington trip. And then Ms. Ghul, and I'm sure Ms. Colbert would love to add something because of the workshops that they attended. Thank you, Mr. Chair and board members.
Well, thank you for that report. Anybody want to add anything on that? No, I'm going to Ms. Ghul next anyway, but, so I'll go to her, but after, after you, Ms. Ghul. Do you want, no, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, while we're on this topic, because she may want to talk.
So yes, this is, it was a great conference out in Denver with the National School Boards Association. And I was one of the voting delegates for the state of Florida as they looked at their beliefs, resolutions, and, and the way, and what they wanted, what National School Boards Association wanted to know was what the delegates, the school board members across the nation, wanted them to advocate for in Washington, D.C. So that was a very interesting, day-long discussion on that. But that work informs their work as they advocate for school districts across the nation. And then I, I told Dr. Jenkins, she would get really tired of me going to these conferences, because when I go, I'm looking for great ideas, like Mrs. Gordon said. What are they doing across the nation that is innovative, that we can bring back to Orange County? So I've already discussed a couple of terrific ideas that I brought back. But that's the value of sending a couple of the school board members to these conferences, is to look for best practices, innovative ideas, and, and great things that we can bring back here to Orange County Public Schools. So we'll be, you'll be hearing more about that and, and discussing those ideas with the superintendent. So thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Ghul.
I, I wanted to follow up on that, too, and, and actually go a step further. I mentioned one of the programs that I saw, which was actually a lunch where they had a speaker come in. His name is, oh, hang on, I have it here, Steve Dembo. And he started as a kindergarten teacher and became kind of a voluntold tech guru, because he knew how to fix the printer, and then became this advocate for really creating dynamic education. And have you all ever seen the video about the, I think it's a Swedish video, where the, the kids are trying to get a peanut out of a tube? Have you ever seen that? It's on a plain white table. You can look it up on YouTube, and if you type in "get peanut out of a tube," you'll, you'll find it. But it's a plain white table, and there's a tube stuck to the table, and it's about that tall, probably about a foot, foot tall, and there's a peanut in the bottom of it. And they're sent into the room to try to figure out how to get the peanut out of the, out of the tube. And there's a table there, there's a table behind them with some things on the table behind them, and they try to suck it out, they try to blow it out, they, they try to reach their fingers in to get it out. And then it shoots to a picture of a chimpanzee who's in a similar room, and there's a pitcher of water behind the chimpanzee, and the chimpanzee gets the pitcher of water, pours it into the tube, and the peanut floats to the top. And his point in showing this video is that we tell people they can't do things, because that wasn't, none of those tools were on the table. The kids all saw the tools, but they weren't on the table, so they didn't think they were allowed to use those tools. And how do you create an environment where they're using everything that they have in that environment to bring education alive and make it fun? And that was his whole point. So when we talk about education, I, I would love to find a way to have a discussion with the boundaries that we have. But since we're going fully digital, we have some opportunities in what he has brought to life with creating that kind of a dynamic classroom, where it's very interactive, and you almost have living labs, and you're learning your, all your content. You're still having to take all your tests. You're still having to do all of that. But he talked about, it was a, a literature class, and they had to, and this was middle schoolers, and they had to take a paragraph and tell what they learned in that paragraph. And then normally, we would make them write that out. Well, they could do it any way they want. So some kids created a video. Two young ladies created an interpretive dance on, on how to do it. The point was, did they accomplish the task, and they started to use their talents? So I'd like us to look for that. One of the other sessions that I went to that I thought was pretty interesting was the use of facilities and how some are really changing that. And I know we're moving towards changing our facilities, but they're even looking at the, the furniture and things. And I know one of my classes in, one of my schools in, in West Orange County, the teacher switched out her chairs for bouncy chairs, because it helps with core strength. It helps with them paying attention. It helps, it's very flexible, creates a very flexible classroom. And, and I know we probably get bulk rate on a lot of stuff, but is, is it possible to start to look at that kind of flexibility in our classrooms? There's a lot of studies out there. After I saw that, I started to go online and, and look at some of the studies on some of these, these tools. We're not taking away desks, but even changing things like that and changing the dynamics in the classroom, in, in some of those innovative tools. And we get so, I don't, focused on what we have to get done, that sometimes that we're looking at where we really want to go. And I know the superintendent and the leadership team is always thinking of that. But I see as part of our job is to help clear that way, and how can we do that? And how can we understand that better? And where can we find those flexibilities? And, and really support some of those things that we already have the bones for to come alive. So sorry, that was a little long, but I thought without the examples, you wouldn't really get what I was talking about.
That was excellent. Ms. Cadle.
When we're talking about innovative things,
When we're talking about innovative things, I don't know if any of you saw CBS Sunday Morning, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, and the young man in Boca Raton that has decided that no child eats alone in the Boca Raton High School. And he's now got a club and some, one child gave up playing sports because this is his new passion. And back before coming on this board, that was one of the things that we worked on is when children come to a high school and they're new, a lot of times they don't have a friend network. And so, this, this club or this group that this gentleman started at Boca Raton High, it's their mission to make sure nobody's sitting there by themselves during lunch. And I thought, you know, in some of our schools that we're trying to figure out, what is that one extra thing? It might be really neat to try a pilot of some sort in one or two of our high schools. And according to CBS News, this young man is so passionate about this that he is making it his mission to make sure that it goes statewide and nationwide. And so we might have the opportunity to talk to, Boca Raton, I think is, it's Martin County maybe, or, I don't know.
It's Palm Beach.
Palm Beach?
Yeah.
We might be able to call our friends in Palm Beach and find out who this gentleman is and see if we can at least have a dialogue with him. And it might be something that, Dr. Jenkins, I'm not trying to give your advisory committee something to do, but it might be an interesting conversation for them because most high school children see children that are sitting alone and perhaps they don't know how to put a hand out and reach them. Then the other thing I saw on 60 Minutes that night was the gentleman who's doing chess in Mississippi. Did you see that, Dr. Lawson? That was the coolest story. And if you haven't seen it, go to 60 Minutes and, and look at it because it's a very poor rural Mississippi county. And there is a philanthropist who had put, who has put Dr. Chess in the school for, I think, three years, Dr. Lawson, or something, five years. And these young people, they hadn't really traveled. The fifth and sixth grade team went to compete nationally and they ended up number six in the nation, right? Tenth in, tenth in the nation.
First time.
First time ever.
Yeah.
First time ever. So I thought, you know, with all the exciting things we're doing with chess, I think it was just, it kind of validated it and it kind of made me go, all right, every time I visit my schools in the east, I'm going to ask them how their chess club is doing. And I've started buying chess boards for the schools that need help, that they don't have enough money to buy the chess boards. Riverdale has the name of a place where the more you buy, the cheaper they are. So, but I just thought that was really exciting because it kind of talks about the stuff we're doing. And, you know, especially the chess and it kind of validated it. So it was one of those feel-good stories.
It was.
You saw it?
Mm-hmm.
It was great. Okay.
Love it. Ms. Moore.
I saw that chess story, Mrs. Cadel, and so I'm, I'm all interested in having chess at the Jazz Festival next year. I just have to, of course, I joked with everyone that when I kept praying, praying for good weather, it was, must have been for patients to deal with bad weather. So I said, this year I tried not praying and we had good weather and the pastor said he wasn't sure what to do with that comment. But anyway, I just wanted to give a little report. I'll have it in writing to spend a little time up at Jazz Festival with the FSBA board meeting that I attended on behalf of this board. And I think you'd be very proud of the progress that Andrea is making. And she actually, with very limited amount of dollars, hired a lobbyist so that she could make progress in, in getting back into some of the other legislators' offices. And they're really making an effort to build good, positive relationships with legislators, work harder with social media. And the numbers of boards bringing up and taking training has really risen dramatically. And so, they are using Howie in the Hills as the location for training. And now from my house, that's about 20 minutes. For most of you, maybe 45, but considering, they could be anywhere in Florida, that's a very accessible location. So I would love to talk to the board if you have any interest in doing some advanced board training, particularly if this board changes in the next couple of years, I think. It would certainly be a good exercise for us to look at some board development work. And the one thing they found when they went to the Council of Great Cities and the counties, that they offered training for, those organizations offered training for individual members, but they don't offer training for boards, which I, I really took that as quite amazing. So they're looking at potentially copyrighting some of their coursework and expanding and offering it to the, the League of Cities and the Council of Counties. So anyway, that's really gone pretty well. I would say that since that organization sat down and did some strategic planning, has been much more purposeful and been measuring progress. We're seeing some tremendous improvement in, in that organization. And frankly, really, it did, it, it needed some improvement because times have changed. Mrs. Cale, withstanding, you were a wonderful chairman, but it was actually, actually when you were done, when we had a few little landmines that I think we stepped on quite nicely. And so now it's been a recovery period. But clearly you could see the difference and, and I was in Tallahassee as well. And the one thing that was a little confusing when we were with Senator Simmons, he, he said, you all have to stop beating up all the legislators. You have to become friends. You have to cultivate the relationship and get to know people. And that's what they mentioned at the board meeting. Think of it as a bank and a bank account. And so if you're going to go ask somebody for something, a legislator, to vote a certain way, your bank account better not be in the red. It better have something in there. And I, and I really remember that illustration. What do we do to put money in that bank, in that relationship bank so that? And when you think about the senators where we have such success, they've been there long-term. We've had years to invite them to things and to run into them and help them and that sort of thing. So I, I was really encouraged to spend more time with our brand-new legislators. Also, Senator Monford said just the opposite. He said, y'all better help them feel the heat. So I was like, build a relationship, make them feel the heat. It just sent us home with a big order, a tall order to get done for our students. But it was great being up there with the team. And I have a feeling, Mrs. Flynn will, will tell us we need to get back up there in the next three weeks, so be, get your suitcase packed, be ready to go. Thank you.
All right. That was great. You know, I, we've got, I just want, I don't know if those are students sitting out, but thank you for sitting through our entire meeting. I'm not sure, you know, I always hesitate to ask why you're here because it's none of our business, but we just recognize and appreciate anybody and, and I want you to know that hopefully it shows through, this is our passion and because of sunshine law restrictions, we can't sit around and kibosh like this a lot of times about topics. So you're probably sitting out there going, oh my God, are they ever going to end? But this was, is a fun part of the meeting, but thank you for sitting through it. Not sure it's fun for the rest of the audience, but fun, fun for us. Board members, I've handed out our work session schedule. You'll see we have some more role development workshops coming up on April 27th. And we have a work session on ELL programs and athletic facility equity. So I would encourage you, I know there is some real depth of passion on this board about athletic facility equity. Get with facilities before that. Tell them what you want to hear talked about. I've certainly done that. Alternatives to Graduation is a new ad. We have a recognition program coming up on April 20th. And we do have an executive session here when I adjourn in about two minutes. I would also encourage you, I'm, I'm trying more and more to, and it probably has not gone noticed by you all, to have strategic plan updates on issues of real interests or developments I'm not sure that everybody's aware of. So, you know, weigh in on those. Let Dr. Jenkins know if you want to have a strategic plan update. I think next meeting, is that the one where we're doing it on Naviance, the new Naviance system? You all know I have an intense interest in the new Naviance system, which is our student progression system that's easily accessible to parents. And then, you know, I've asked Dr. Jenkins to, for another example, not anytime soon but in the next three to four meetings, to have a strategic plan update on some exciting developments. I'm just so thrilled. Jim, I see you sitting there in the back on some of the things that I know is going in on, in our IT department and some of the advancements that Mr. Ryan, did I get it right, Jim? Is it, that doesn't sound right. Jim Ryan? Help me out, Dr. Jenkins.
Paul.
Paul, I'm not even close, Jim, I'm sorry. Mr. Paul has brought to the table for us. I'm just getting to know him much better and I really think he's been a tremendous hire, Dr. Jenkins. And so I've asked for a strategic plan update on our IT department and some of the initiatives that he has going on. You probably don't even know I did that, Mr. Paul, but I was so inspired after you presented to the audit committee the other day, went to Dr. Jenkins and said, I really want the whole board to hear about all the things you're doing in, in the IT department. Last thing, as I just want to say, Mrs. Gordon said earlier and somebody else did about presenting. And we do a lot of things in this district that I don't think a lot of other districts do. And this is not homerism, so take this with a grain of salt, but I just jotted down here. I, I think one of the most frustrating things in public education today, and I think it was accentuated and really, really brought to the forefront of my mind with the recent election, was separating myth from reality when it comes to public education. And unfortunately, that seems to have only gotten worse in the last six months. And unfortunately, those myths are even being perpetuated. And where I'm going with this is I've always believed, and those of you who have served with me for six and a half, almost seven years know this, that a lot of it is communicating the reality, a lot of it is promoting the high-quality aspect of the public education we deliver here in Orange County. So I don't know if Mr. Thomas is in the room, but I would suggest you that, and I'm a pretty attentive person and I know no idea is original. I know Hall of Fames at high schools are commonplace throughout the country. I don't know another district that I've read about that does a district Hall of Fame in a large urban district, you know? And I think no, no great idea shouldn't be shared and promoted in another district. So I would love to see us present on that at FSBA. I think now this board, you know, we, we all recognize why we do super scholars, but it's really to promote the high-quality education that we deliver in Orange County Public Schools. I've always wondered why we don't present on that. It even led to a TV special about our super scholars and our students going to elite universities and colleges in America. I don't know many other districts that do a college fair where all students throughout the district can go and in one day, visit upwards, this last college fair, you're going to hear a presentation on it. Next time, we had over 65 colleges and universities at the college fair. I don't know, are there any other districts that have a philanthropic strategic plan? You know, another one that is, that, that is, I think, trend-setting by us. And then, Dr. Jenkins, you know, I've been paying a lot of attention to this and I don't know how many other urban districts even have a strategic plan with the depth of the business plan that we have that you developed. You know, all things that frankly, you know, those of us who are leaders in FSBA, I'd love to see us present at FSBA or at NSBA because I really don't know a lot of other districts that are doing those. And those are just probably a few, I'm sure, I'm missing another half dozen. So, wanted to throw those out publicly. With that, anything else?
Executive.
Executive session immediately afterwards. And is that Ms. Bridges in the back? I can't see in the dark. Mary, can, can I see you afterwards? Sorry to call you out like that, but I wanted to catch you before you left. Executive session, we'll see everybody upstairs in five minutes.